I might all do the same.
Yep, thanks for reminding me.
Um, okay, they were ready now. So, thanks everyone for coming again to our September 1st Board Supervisors and Planning Commission Meeting. And at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Slade, if you have an invitation, please.
Father, at the outset of this meeting, we acknowledge that we need you today, your power, your presence, Lord, here with us. We call upon and ask for your wisdom, Lord, and your discernment as we consider these issues that lie before us today. Thank you for these gentlemen and for their service to our community. Pray, Father, that you will bless them, that you will help them, Lord, to see what is in the best interest of all citizens of our county. Father, thank you so much for this country we live in and the freedoms we enjoy. Thank you for allowing us to participate in our government. In Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Perry. Okay, this time, we are going to call to order our Planning Commission Meeting. And we have considered approval from the minutes. Motion by Mr. Morris, second by Mr. Gaines, approved minutes. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. Old Business?
The first item under Old Business, or the only item under Old Business, is a conditional use permit for Joe Ellingberg at 2496 Highway 471. We're just reviewing this. The hearing is scheduled for Tuesday. The property is located on the east side of Highway 471. It's north of Bay Point subdivision. It's a .26 acre parcel that's Zone C2. In this aerial photo, you can see there's an existing building on that property. Mr. Ellingberg is requesting the conditional use permit to operate a body shop in this existing building. The building was used as a body shop in the past, but that business has been closed for approximately 10 years. The most recent use of the building was a cabinet shop. That's a view of the mill. This building sits just behind the mill, out on 471. And this is surrounding property. So that was just a review. That hearing's on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. New considerations?
Okay, under new considerations, the first item is a conditional use permit for Clifton Yoder at 135 Langford Cove. Langford Drive runs off the east side of Highway 471, and at the cul-de-sac, it turns to a private drive called Langford Cove. Mr. Yoder is seeking a conditional use permit for a pole barn with living quarters that he has already started construction of at 135 Langford Cove. This is a 9.85 acre parcel. It's zoned RE1. This is his site plan showing the location of the building on that property. This is at the end of the cul-de-sac where Langford Cove, the private drive, comes in. This is a view of the pole barn with the living quarters. And this is an adjoining property.
Renee?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back? That is already, that is the building we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're saying?
He had a permit for the building, but we didn't know that there was living quarters in it.
Has it been inspected?
They've had inspections, yes.
I mean, was it being inspected while it was built?
It was, but, you know, the inspector doesn't always know
Right.
what the permit was pulled for, what it said. So, yes, he did get the inspections.
But he's built it like it should be?
Yes, sir. It's passed all the inspections.
Is it two bedrooms, bathroom, kitchen? I mean...
I don't remember on the floor plan. I think it has, you know, two bedrooms, probably. I know it has a bathroom, a kitchen, living area.
And I think what he's gonna do, I think he's gonna expand on that more. It's just the initial side of it, his wife determined that she actually liked it. We could close it all in and live in it, you know, so...
You're gonna, but they're talking about living in it. I mean, expand it to live in, or?
Mm-hmm, to live in, yeah.
Just go to the next picture, please. That house sitting well back...
No, I see him going the wrong way.
Lost it. There it is.
The house sitting...
This one. That's next door.
That's like really next door. I mean, that's a separate lot, separate acreage?
It is. He had to get close to that property line because there's some flood issues out there, flood zone issues.
So that's it to the right?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
Jesus, to the left.
He met the setback on that side. It was 15 feet.
What are the other houses like around there?
This is across the street from that.
The thing about, they were okay with building a pole barn there, though, weren't they?
We haven't received any complaints from any of the neighbors.
I don't think he had to get a variance to build a pole barn.
He didn't.
Yeah, so...
It's because he's added the living quarters.
So the neighbors had no input whatsoever. But there's a difference in building a...
When you add the living quarters, it's considered a dwelling.
Yeah.
Nobody's complaining?
We haven't received any complaints yet, at this time.
Really?
That's just a view on down that private drive.
Where is this?
Behind Oakdale Elementary. No, Elementary, Oakdale School.
On 471.
Elementary on 471.
You're turning.
On 471.
I thought she was...
Let's just say it.
It's a big open area with two bathrooms. Full of bath and a half.
It's a landscaping maybe in front, kinda make it up a little bit.
Yep. At this point, we're just gonna set it for a hearing, right?
We are, we're setting the hearing.
Okay.
Okay. The motion's set for hearing.
Okay.
Last second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Gaines to set the public hearing. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Hey, Renee, would you make a note to remind us? Maybe at that time, we can discuss putting some type of screen or landscaping or something.
Yes, sir. The next item is a conditional use permit for I-55 Development LLC on Old Fannin Road. The property is located on the west side of Old Fannin. They're seeking a conditional use permit to construct a 4,135 square foot convenience store on this property. They're carving a .689 acre parcel out of a 12 acre tract that's north of the Pots and Moore Pottery on Old Fannin Road. That's an aerial view of the property. It's Zone C2. This is a view of a preliminary site plan. They're showing the placement of the building on the property. They're just wanting to find out if they can be approved for this use before they obtain more detailed drawings and a drainage plan. These are color renderings of what the building will look like. The contractor did say that the entire building would have a brick facade. This is a street view going south on Old Fannin Road. The property is on the right-hand side. This is a view of that property.
You know, I talked to the gentleman who's the contractor, and I told him, in my personal opinion, I didn't have issue with it. But I don't think that we can say right now, I don't think it'd be right for us to vote yes without having opportunity for public input. So...
This is just to set the hearing. We're just setting that.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, I'll make the motion, set the hearing. Motion by myself, second by Mr. Morris, set the hearing. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Next is a dimensional variance request for PGM Properties LLC at 3017 Highway 80. This property is located on the north side of Highway 80. It's east of Carbonic Drive. This is a 3.17 acre parcel. It's zoned I2. This is an aerial view of that property. They're proposing construction of office storage units. And the site plan shows six phases, but they're only planning to construct Phase 1 at this time. Phase 1 will consist of six units. They'll have 1,000 square feet in each unit. The entrance, exit, driveway, and parking area is shown as hard surface. This is a color rendering of what the building will look like. They're showing brick. Each unit will have a roll-up door, and there'll be two parking spaces for each unit. They're proposing a metal building with brick on the front and sides. That's a view of the side of the building. And then for the rear, they're proposing metal. Mr. Parker has received drainage plans for review. This is a corner lot that fronts on Highway 80 and also on that entrance drive into East Brandon Office Park. The I-2 zone requires a 50-foot front setback. And since it's a corner lot, that front setback applies to both streets. They meet the front setback from the Highway 80 side, but are requesting a variance of 35 feet from the front setback along the entrance drive. This is a picture of that drive coming into East Brandon Office Park. This is a view of that corner lot. This is the adjoining property to the north, Precision Leasing. Mr. Jeff Goodwin is here, and Jake Purvis, if y'all have any questions about that.
I'll make a motion, we're set to hear it.
Second. Motion by Mr. Morris to set the public hearing. Second by, who are you? Oh, Mr. Frost. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
You got how many more days?
Okay, the last item is a rezoning on Terra Way. The county is initiating rezoning of this 100 acre tract of land off Terra Road from RE1A to RE1. RE1A does not allow for development of subdivisions. It's considered a transitional zone, and it may be considered for rezoning. This is an aerial view of that property. The previous property owner of the 100 acre parcel divided that property into seven lots from 2004 to the present without our knowledge. Four of the seven lots have homes on them. Owners of the three remaining lots want to obtain building permits. The new buyer wishes to sell the remainder of the property. There's a potential, they have a potential buyer who may be interested in subdividing the remaining 72.54 acres for large lot residential development. This is just a view of the zoning map. Property on the west side is R1, has some ag to the south, and then the rest of that to the east is all RE1A.
I'll make the motion, set the motion. We're set to hear it.
Motion by Mr. Morris to set the hearing. Second by Mr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. Thank you, Renee. Site plan, architectural review.
Okay. Under the site plan, architectural review is a request to amend the existing site plan that was approved for Amy Baker-Ruff at 96 Baker Lane. That property is located on the southeast corner of Baker Lane and Highway 471. It's a 1.61 acre parcel that's zoned C2. That's an aerial view of that property. They were approved back in December of 2015 to use that property as a car lot. At that time, in their application, they stated that they would asphalt that parking area in front of the building as shown in this photo. They're asking now to amend that and see if you will allow them to have a limestone parking lot rather than the asphalt. They are planning to give the building a facelift. They're gonna be painting the building. These are supposed to be the paint colors. However, that doesn't show up. It's a beige color. That's gonna be the shutter color, and it's a darker beige color. And then they're also gonna try to dress up the front a little bit, redo the flower beds. There's an existing flagpole that they wanna put a flag on, and they're gonna paint that cover also, that driveway cover. These are views of the building.
What do we do on the other car lot across the road?
It's slag.
Slag or something?
But that's in the city of Flowood, across the road.
Well, it'd be, what they're doing, be an improvement to the property.
It would.
Considerably, yeah.
Yep.
That's your cause, Ford. I'm good. Make the motion. I make the motion. Are we setting it, or are we approving it?
Approving.
Okay, I make the motion, let's prove it.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison to approve the change. Any consideration? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Ayes have it. Nuisance properties.
First item under nuisance properties, gentlemen, is a continuation of the Johnny Cooksey nuisance property, 656 Andrew Chapel Road. We'll open that public hearing, or reopen that public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos.
These pictures were taken back in June. Mr. Cooksey's house burned, and we had received complaints before that time in regard to inoperable vehicles. They thought he was running a mechanic shop on that property, just rubbish and debris. Also, there were three campers on that property that were being lived in. And then these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday. There has been a lot of work done there, but there are still some issues. The camper's still there. There are a few inoperable vehicles. And then there is still some rubbish and debris, as you can see in that photo.
Are you guys here? Yes, let's find out. At this time, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak on the matter of the Johnny Cooksey nuisance property. Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here stepping forward to speak on the matter. My suggestion would be, based on the photos, that we still have some issues. Maybe the time is now to go ahead and declare the nuisance and allow the justice court to take the matter at this point. And there will be some time delay, so that he's able to, if he's able to complete the work, that matter won't go any further.
Do we have any information of any health problems? Does anybody know that the guy's been in hospital or anything like that for the last month?
I don't think so.
I'll make the motion, we send it up the hill then.
Sucker.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morris to declare this as nuisance. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
For the record, that matter is, that hearing is closed. For the record. All right, the next item is the Natasha and Kelly Warren nuisance property, 124 Geolatti Drive, District 1. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos.
All right, we received complaints starting in March about people running a body shop here. They said there were numerous vehicles, inoperable vehicles, tall grass, rubbish and debris. These pictures were taken July the 11th. The certified mail was received. And these are new pictures that were taken yesterday. They've added a fence at the back, but you can still see some vehicles behind the fence.
What about the vehicle by the house?
There's still some inoperable vehicles there in the yard as well.
We're actually here.
Wait.
The one that's...
Come forward.
The one that's sitting beside the house, it's actually on record. We're actually getting those moved today, so...
The dually is the only thing that's still there, and that's my personal vehicle.
If you don't mind, I'll give you a name and address just for...
Natasha. And the fence that you see over there on the side that's in front of that little white shed, we're actually still building that one. So it's actually gonna cover that and come around a little, the side of the picture. I wanna make it look a little bit better.
Okay.
Is your white truck running?
That white truck?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. As long as it's tagged, piled, running.
It's got air ride and stuff, so I don't use it to cruise on the coast every year.
Yeah. We just make sure, you know, they gotta be titled and tagged.
Yeah, it's, it's gotta tag on.
Okay.
If there's anything else that needs...
The 50 to 56, it's on a record right now, sitting in my yard. That black car right there.
And then the white truck that you see behind the fence, it'll be moved as well, so... So it is the actual body shop in Byron.
And on that case, can I keep something in the backyard? I mean, as long as what I need to do, put a 10-foot fence up?
They have to be operable. You can't store inoperable vehicles.
It runs.
And has a tag.
I mean, it ain't a tag. I got a body shop in Byron, so when I can't fit everything there, I'll put something in my backyard till I can get it in there. I mean, that's kinda why I move kinda out in the country. Instead, I'll go east and east street and purr them.
I would suggest, and if you want to keep people from calling, complaining, then you make it where they can't see the vehicle.
Go and put a 10-foot fence up.
I ain't saying that, but I'm just saying, you know, I'd make it where they can't see the vehicle.
They can't see.
Something.
Vegetation or something, yeah. Looks like you're making an effort to address the situation.
I mean, it looks different. They took that picture yesterday, but I come home, I don't get off till about 7:30 at night, so I come home with the wreck and loaded up that black 56. So, I mean, if somebody went by there today, the wreck is still sitting in my yard with the car on it. Really, for the dually, I really don't wanna move it, 'cause that's my personal...
Well, I don't think you have to move it.
I mean, I can move it to the other side and park all our vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, if it's running, I mean, if you wanna move it just to move it, I don't see a problem with that. It's running. Yeah. What I was getting at, though, it looks like you're doing, you're making an effort to do it.
See, I've had calls from the...
We'll just give you what, let's see, this is, what's the next one would be, what?
9/29. The meeting day?
Yeah.
9/29, I think, is the next work session.
Well, rather than declaring it nuisance and all, since you're making an effort, I would, just would like to kinda extend this along till, and we'll monitor it, obviously, till, which would be, our next meeting would be 9/29. They give you 30 days, but you, I know, to make sure it's all right.
Can I come by myself? She gotta take all the work when she...
You won't have to be here. If you get it done, you won't even have to come.
Okay.
I mean, we'll take it, and then, you know, if you've done everything, and they'll look at and report back, yeah? And as far as, I wouldn't see why you'd have to come anyway, even if you did need to come, one of you.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
All we need to do is just get that, that one part that's on the record moved, and just make sure the property doesn't get...
Straight to the fence.
The one in the backyard, make...
Well, yeah, and the other fence.
Yeah, you might wanna, you might wanna...
You're talking about the white trucks digging up?
You might wanna make some effort.
This dually, I think, is okay.
The one that's on the side of the shop.
Where there's another one?
The one that, you can see it through...
Oh, yeah, I got it. Right there. But see, it's a big four-wheel drive, so it's kinda hard to hide it.
Right.
Like, let the air out and tire it.
Matter of fact, they all on flat right now. I was trying to hide it.
I'm gonna put you in the distance.
If I got to, I'll just put a 10-foot fence across there.
All right, and you keep, if you keep your grass cut and the yard cleaned up, I think you'll be fine.
Yeah.
Just keep it cleaned up.
I got two neighbors, they've been rough ever since we moved there.
Well, just kinda keep it clean, keep peace in the neighborhood.
So he's gonna table this until our next meeting, and so hopefully...
Give you a chance to get it completely done.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
We'll continue that public hearing on the record until 9/29. The next matter is the Christopher Kirsch nuisance property, 519 Ridge Crest Drive, District 3 property. We'll open that public hearing. Renee, if you'll show us the photos.
All right. We received several complaints at this location about tall grass, rubbish and debris, appliances being stored under the carport there. Our first certified mail was unclaimed, but the hearing notice was received. These pictures were taken June 7th. I think the backyard is uncut. You can kinda see in these pictures, it's grown up.
Like the side, kinda grown up.
These are new pictures that were taken yesterday.
What is that in the backyard?
Corn?
All that that you just showed us is yesterday's pictures?
Wait, these, no. These are yesterday's pictures, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. These are yesterday's pictures right here.
I'm assuming this is Mr. Kirsch. All right, Mr. Slade?
Yes, sir.
Your name, name and address. State your name and address.
Christopher Kirsch.
What's your name, Pam, Mr. Kirsch?
I'm gonna get it all cleaned up by this weekend.
We started, we started the process, what, back in June, Renee? Is that correct?
That's correct.
We don't mind extending, obviously, you saw what we've done here before, and extending the deadlines, as long as there's been progress being made. So, you had opportunity to do, but I'm willing to give you another 30 days on this, but come next time around, there won't be any continuation. We'll move on up to JP Courts, so... But it'd be great, I appreciate if you can take care. And you don't have to come back. If you do, like, come back, you get cleaned up, you're good to go.
Okay, then.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Yeah, I mean, you've had quite a bit of time to do it, so now, they're kinda your ultimatum.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's fair enough. I'm good with you.
I will call you boss.
Thanks, Mr. Kirsch.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
I'd like the motion to table it for 30 days.
Well, that's about the only choice we have, because we don't meet again on this.
We will continue that public hearing until the 29th of September. The next matter under nuisance properties is the Adona Owens nuisance property at 160 Spring Hill Drive's District 1 parcel. At this time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate, please.
All right, we've received complaints here about tall grass, rubbish and debris, inoperable vehicles. Both of our certified letters were received. Mrs. Owens called and spoke with Dwayne. These are pictures that were taken July 7th of that property.
Yes, ma'am.
Come on up, ma'am.
You can come on up.
And these were the new pictures that were taken yesterday.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And you?
There hasn't been any change.
Just, you got her name? We got her name. State your name.
I'm Adona Owens.
What do we like, the vehicle in the yard and cutting the grass?
And...
Is it a pickup? Is that what I'm looking at?
There is a pickup there, and I think there's also another vehicle that's inoperable. This one.
Gosh, we need to fire camera taker.
How many, how many do you have that are inoperable there? That's one?
I'm working on that one to get done.
Huh?
I'm getting the one that you just showed, the cougar.
Okay.
I'm waiting for a mechanic to come out to get that one done.
Where is it sitting?
Sitting across the road in front of me.
Well, it's just been moved over there.
Yes, I moved it over there to get it worked on.
Well, there was one sitting there, and then you moved another one over there?
And I moved it after the complaint came in.
And then you moved another one over there?
And I put that one over there to sort of be worked on. Now I can move it back, like I talked to Mr., I thought he was here, Mr. Dwayne. I came and talked to him, and I talked to you, and about the complaint. No, I didn't say nothing, but I moved it to there. But I got, I talked about my complaint came in, and why I got a complaint, and...
Well, to be honest with you, I mean, I've got complaints, not just for you, but several throughout the whole neighborhood.
Right, the neighborhood needs to be cleaned up. And one person going to be, you know, and because we live out in the woods. There's no one in there but us neighbors, about 10 or 12, some of us is here today. And where we live at, it's not in the city of, it's outside the city limit. And we, if you pass there, Mr. Morris, I...
Oh, I know.
You know exactly where I live.
Oh, I know exactly, yes.
And if you pass Clearwood Road, there's no way for anyone to know that we even back in there. It's just the church is in the, it's said what you can see until you come off to that road, Clearwood Road, Clearwood Bound. That's the only way. And we get complaints from my neighbor, what I'm saying, my neighbor. And not that, I'm trying to make an excuse. I'm a widow woman. And I know I had got several excuses, because they wanted to bring them over home in there. That's when this excuse got started.
Oh, actually, and I mean, I'm not here to argue with you or anything. But no, what I'm saying, actually, this has actually started, we've had it for several years.
We have, dating back to... We have, dating back to twenty-two.
Falling down houses, or abandoned houses and things like that. So, I mean, we, this is not just something new.
Right, right, but I'm talking about this time. I know I have had complaint in the, in the past.
And the car has been on complaint before, too. Is that, is that correct? I believe, Renee, the one that we've moved, that she got moved, Dwayne? Yeah, and then moved.
That, that's right.
What's confusing me is why you put one back in there when you knew you had to move that one, move one, you gotta move, put one back in its place.
It's.
And the same thing applies, you got to move it.
It's not a reason, I can't give them what, what I said, I was.
Well, where was it?
It was sitting right there beside there.
The other car, the one that wasn't, that you just put in the place of the one you moved, where was it?
It was sitting in the driveway.
It was at your house?
Yes, it was, yes, it was sitting inside. And I brought it over there so it, way he could be easier to get to it, to work on it. I thought, that's what me thinking there.
Well, how long before we're going to be able to get, I guess, the pickup out of there and the car out of there? Uh, and that, that's what we're talking about, aren't we?
And get someone, I mean, you know, it takes a while to finance, and if, but give me another thirty days, I said, uh, twenty, thirty days, and I talked, I said to Mr. Wayne. And only thing, that's the only thing I can say, financing, when you ask people to come cut, they never shows up. I got two people pending, to, one to work on the car and cut the grays.
Okay, with the pickup, what's going to happen, have to happen to it?
I said, I was, that's my husband, because he died, and I was going to put, you know, move it back while I could fence it in.
Fence what in?
That, that you asked about the pickup.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
But it's in your yard.
I was going to move it back, as I said, somewhere, and where I could fence it in.
Or, or back in the yard somewhere?
I couldn't see, some, if it's out of sight, then I could fence it in, but that'd be a problem, too.
Is there something that lives in the truck?
No, sir, I mean, you know.
You were saying fence it in?
I would fence it, put a fence in front of it. Yes, sir, I would fence the truck in, where you, as I heard this man say it earlier.
I thought you was meaning, like, keep something either from going in or coming out.
Oh, no, sir, no, sir, he said fence the truck, put a fence down there somewhere, move it back and put a fence down.
Before you do that, you might want to get, you might want to run that by us before you just put a fence out there.
I mean.
I don't know that's going to work, just put a fence to cover the pickup up.
Put it down, it might cross my backyard, back there.
Again, you're not supposed to store inoperable vehicles on your property.
Okay, ma'am. That's not going to work.
I mean, I was just listening to the other person, you know, I know you, I see vehicles, and I see them all the time stored, that's, you know, so I guess.
What we really need is to have your yard cleaned up and the pickup moved, and I don't think it's going to work just to move it around the corner and, because I, I, that's not going to, that's not the purpose of this, uh, hearing. So you're going to need to move it and get the yard cleaned up and do the things.
Oh, yes, I have.
I'm willing, I'm willing to give you the other, the thirty days, simply because you're here, but you've not made much attempt to clean it up. Or better still, really, maybe I ought to go ahead and declare the nuisance. That still gives you a thirty-day period. Becau, or, or time period in there, because that way, if you get it cleaned up, then that goes away, but if you don't, then it becomes, oh, you, it winds up in the court. I think that's probably the best way to handle this one, um, and that way, you're still getting the same amount of time, the, the, uh, so, I think that's the way I would like to handle this one. And, and, and we've done this numerous times, it gives you still a, a large, it gives you thirty days and sometimes even more to get this accomplished. But it also gives you a, more or less a deadline, that, uh, you know this has to be done by this time, to be able to keep you out of going any further as far as legal.
Can I just say this here, because they, this has just growed up for this, for now.
Yes, ma'am.
This is not a long term now. This just got grown up.
Right.
Uh, someone hadn't came and cut it.
Right.
Now.
Okay.
And as I stated, this all got started with us being complaining. The complaint came in after.
I, I don't know, I couldn't honestly tell you, tell you that. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know anything about that part.
Ms. Owens, though, you know, we as the county, we, we get complaints, we have to deal with them, so.
It's no different with Sheriff's Department getting a complaint, they have to look into it. I mean, that's, that's just part of it. Uh, and there's other, the other properties there that, that, uh, I could tell you some other, there're going to be some, there's some complaints out there, they just not, uh, have received their letter yet, let me put it that way.
I understand, I understand.
Thank you, Ms. Owens.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to clarify one thing that was said, just to be sure that we stay on the same page and compare apples to apples. The distinction of operable vehicles versus inoperable vehicles is important to keep in mind. I think the information that you received today was that the vehicles that we were discussing just then are in fact inoperable vehicles, that's what cannot be stored on site. The operable vehicles, obviously, uh, is totally different classification, and our ordinance does not touch those.
Well, honestly, I thought, really, I thought that one that she moved over in the other spot has been moved back and forth more than once.
Apparently, there is some operability there, even though it's not tagged.
Okay.
Uh, currently, which would be.
I was on the impression that it, it did move.
Right.
Did drive.
Uh, Ms. Morrow, you, you are making, I believe you're making a motion to go ahead and wrap that one up to, yeah, we, we need to close public hearing.
Yeah.
Uh, and your motion is that we would, uh.
Close public hearing.
Declare it a nuisance.
Declare it a nuisance, and that'll give her the timeframe she needs to get it, I think, plenty of time to get it cleaned up.
Second. Motion by Mr. Morrison to declare this a nuisance, give her thirty days to address it before, before it goes forth, is that it? Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes, aye.
And to answer your question, Steve, something might be living in that, it's quite a bit of stuff in that pickup.
Yeah, man. I've got one, I'm trying to get a filter on, too. Okay. We need to, uh, next meeting will be next month, so we need a recess till the twenty-ninth. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison, recess till the twenty-ninth of September. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, aye. Okay, we're going to call our board supervisors back to order, and at this time, we have public comments from Mr. Brandon Cobb.
Morning, Jim.
Morning.
Well, mosquito business, business has been a little bit busy this month. It's been real hard because of the rain in the first half of the month. We had rain at night and then sunshine and hot during the day. With the rain at night, we couldn't spray, so they were coming out. Uh, since about the fifteenth, we've had a couple of clear nights, and then the last week and a half, we've had clear all the way, and it sprayed the entire county in that time. And starting, uh, tomorrow night, we're going to respray the entire county. Uh, we didn't have a lot of trap counts this month. The traps were rained out. We got them back and it's just mushing them because of the rain, but the counters, um, two weeks ago, went real high, they skyrocketed. All summer, we've had real low counts, and compared to this time last year, they were about normal, but compared to what we've had all summer, they went high. Uh, the ones I counted from Monday have all gone back down. We didn't have over forty-five mosquitoes in any of our traps from Monday. Uh, we, we set more out yesterday, and we're setting more out today. So we're going to see how those trap counts rise a little compared to what we've been spraying, and like I said, we're going to respray the entire county over the next couple of weeks, just to knock down what all this rain and heat has brought in. Uh, we've got several calls over the last couple of weeks, people wondering why they haven't seen the trucks, because the mosquito counts haven't gone higher, but we're, we can't spray when it's raining. But we have addressed the issue, we've talked to the people, and reassured them, we are out there, we've gone and seen a couple of people in person. We've got the trucks running as, as much as the weather will allow, and fortunately, we've had some clear weather here to actually get it done. It's looking good, looks like our efforts are working, and we're, got a plan for this next month. Even got a couple of extra people hired on temporarily, kind of attack this issue, keep mosquito counts down. And when we came in last year, they were rather high, and we sprayed a lot more last year than we did this year. With the rain that came in in the spring, and our effort from last year, and then us coming in hidden with the larvicide and the surveillance and, uh, spraying, this year, we've kept it down. I know it didn't seem like it, but it never does when it comes to mosquitoes, so, but things are evening back out, and we should, you should be able to see the drop around your homes, and your people should be able to see the drop, since we've been able to get the trucks out there.
Brandon, are we doing the pellets at all, or are we just spraying?
What we do is, we have granular larvicide, and we go to, uh, every day, several of our people go out throughout the county looking for standing water, the ditches, the puddles, whatever. Sample for larvae if there's some present, and I tell them even in some places where it looks like they're going to be present. We put some in, of course, it's recorded. We do have the pellets, they're mostly for larger bodies of water that don't have fish or frogs. If you've got any kind of minnows, frogs, or tadpoles, they're going to eat the larva. If the water's fresh or if it's running, you're not going to have larva in it. We don't have a lot of call for like the forty-five-day pellets in the county. Some people, uh, who called, you know, service calls, they have something on their property, or something near the road, they'll call, we'll go out there. If it's large enough and it does have larvae present, we'll put them in, but by and large, we don't put a lot of them out. Uh, we do have them, if people request them, if y'all find a place y'all think we need to put them in, we can. The problem with them in is, is the granular lasts about two weeks, but it's really a lot cheaper than the, uh, pellets. And if you get a rainstorm, even a little sprinkle can wash it away. We can go back out and reapply that. You drop one of those pellets, the forty-five to eighty days, and it never lasts that long anyway, they're supposed to. They can get washed out quickly, and if, you know, if you're thinking, hey, we put a forty-five day in here, we don't have to check it as often, and it gets washed out, you're going to have more. It's better to use the, the small granular and recheck it periodically than to use them, but we do have them if, if there's a need.
Yeah, I, I know I've gotten several calls in the Castle Woods area, uh, about mosquitoes, obviously, and I'm sure you're getting them all over the place. I've got several calls there, and then obviously around the reservoir, it's, uh, it's getting at it pretty good, so.
But I mean, what's it from, though? I mean, how's this water?
Yeah, well, I mean, standing water for rain on top of that, but plus on top of just being around the water in general, at the reservoir.
Problem.
Never helps.
Yeah, we've been, uh, spraying, in fact, Monday night, we, and we finally finished up the last of our zones, and again, we haven't broken up into zones.
Yeah.
And a lot of that around, uh, Castle Woods and up to Spillway, Spillway Road off, uh, Old Fanning, Old Fanning, uh, Fanning Landing Circle, that area. Um, we've had, uh, our people in larvicide-ing, uh, the last couple of days in that area. Um, it's really just been, because of the rain, we couldn't get out and spray. You know, it rains all night, trucks can't run.
You know, Castle Woods is a weird area, because they've got those lakes and all, and the golf course and everything like that.
I have to say, that creek that runs through the golf course is horrible.
Right.
Uh, I said last year, we actually walked the creek last year, uh, put wake boots on, walked up, found three beaver dams. Uh, what we can get to, and there was, um, the retention ponds out on the old golf course, these sewer ponds or whatever, we actually trapped right by one of those.
Because you've got traps over there on Wexford and, and that area, don't you?
Well, that, that's actually the one that's on the old golf course. That's the closest address.
Gotcha.
Um, and, but because of the wet weather, we've had to move it temporarily over to Bradford, we had the trap left, because we can't get out on the old golf course. But right there by that retention pond, and it's hidden, last year, we didn't even see it till y'all questioned us about it, and we went back with Google Earth, and, because it was so grown up around it. And we've been setting both our CDC light traps and gravity traps out there since then. Usually, when we spray Castle Woods, we go through the old golf course spraying. I think the biggest problem in Castle Woods is that creek. It needs to be cleaned out from end to end, because it's retaining so much water, and we can't, we can't get to everywhere in there.
Right.
Because, you know, you have a farm or something, you got a creek, there's usually little paths, deer paths, and you can get down to it. I had to cut my way out with a machete when I was walking up to the creek and get to a beaver dam, I couldn't cross, and I went up the bank, there wasn't no way out.
Yeah, and it's the same situation all the way in the Mill Creek, you know, where it runs through, it's the same creek that runs into the reservoir that way, so.
Yes. I think Castle Woods would be much improved if we, you know, if we'd somehow dredge it or cut through it, you know, one of them huge bulldozers with a plow blade, just go from end to end. Because, I mean, there's rocks, there's limbs, there's beaver dams.
And, and, and our problem with it is, is private property.
Yeah.
That's, that's what gets us hung up on that little thing that Craig hangs us up on the law, you know, so.
Yeah. We had a little bit of problem with that when we sprayed the actual, the good golf course last year, and we had to go and talk to him, and he don't let us do so much. And then they waited, after I walked the creek, to show me the pictures of the water muck, since they pulled out of there, so.
Thank you, Brandon.
We're working on it. Uh, any other questions?
I do. The traps, do you, what do you do to the mosquitoes? Do you test what type they are, or what they carry?
When we bring the traps in, uh, I sit in in what I call our lab, it's pretty much a folding table, a microscope, and a light. And I have, I actually have to sit there and identify what genus and species that mosquito is, and we count how many of each genus and species we have, like, uh, Nophaleus quadramycelatus. And we have twenty in this trap, and then we have a total for each trap. And we send off to the health department testing on the certain ones that carry the disease, and if we have enough of a sample, it's like ten Culex to fifty is one sample. If you don't have ten in a trap, you can't send a sample, and at every fifty, you start another sample. And we send them there, they put them in a blender and test them for West Nile and malaria and.
And you may have said this, have we had any hits in Rankin County?
No, not yet. Well, there was one in Flowood, in the city limits, but it was far enough in that it, it wasn't even a mile, am I trying to say this? Where it was, it was more than a mile to our borders to where we control. We do have traps near that area, but we have not had any positive hits either with the health department's traps, our traps, or any lives.
You know, portions of that old golf course is going to fall inside that.
I'm sorry?
Portions of that old golf course touching in Castle Woods on twenty-five is going to fall into the city right there.
Yes, but where the, the, uh, case was, uh, in Flowood, was not near our jurisdiction. I wish we could get all the cities in that way. We do all of Rankin County, and I know, you know, what's going on in these places where we can't get to right now.
So you don't think Flowood. So we don't have any Zika viruses?
No, sir, and we do not have the mosquito that carries it.
That's even better, okay.
The main mosquito that carries it is on coastal regions and further south of the equator, Brazil, Virgin Islands. We might have some of those mosquitoes in Biloxi, that type of area, but the only transmission cases we've seen is, to this point, uh, countrywide, is Florida. And of course, we're, we're a company, we're working with CDC from Biloxi up, trying to keep preventing it in Louisiana. Uh, I have people from my office in Louisiana today getting ready for an aerial mission down there with all the flooding to prevent those mosquitoes, but we don't have any cases or any threat of Zika at this point in this area.
Good deal. Thank you.
One thing that, that, I don't know if you can do anything with this, well, the problem I'm having, and I'm sure several, is these, uh, basically abandoned swimming pools. Uh, and they're holding so much stagnant water, and they're on private property. I get several complaints, and I've seen a couple of them there. I mean, they're just falling in, they need to be filled in, but the problem is, and I know one particular one that I get, uh, the most calls about is, uh, being able to get up to it to even fill it in would be a problem.
But this is on private property, of course, unless we're invited by the homeowner, or if y'all do a nuisance and ask us to go, we can't do anything. I went last year, uh, Brian Grantham called us to go do, there was a swimming pool, and I can't even remember what part of the county it was in, but I went out there personally.
On South Eagle Ridge?
I think that, that was it, and there were dogs, there was no homeowner, and I couldn't even get out to get to the pool, because the dogs pretty much were circling my truck like sharks.
Yeah, I've been there. They, they mostly bluff.
Okay, I wasn't testing them.
Just so you know.
I didn't have a big stick, I wasn't testing them, but, uh, something like that, we could put those forty-day pellets in.
Yeah.
Until it can be filled in or drained or cleaned, whatever.
Well, that's, Renee, that's the one I talked to you about the other day, that might be something we need to look at and suggest that the, to help out, because, and the reason this is, uh, the, actually, the neighbor was one of the ones that had, uh, West Nile, uh, sometime, I think a year ago, year and a half ago, two years ago, I think. And, you know, naturally, he obviously thinks, probably came from that pool, but anyway, it is a terrible situation.
It, it was, I, like I said, I could see enough of the pool from where I parked the truck, so it needed just, of course, I called Brian and talked to him and told him the situation. If the, y'all can get the homeowner to call us, or if y'all declared a nuisance and you call us and say y'all can go here now, we can go back out there and put the, the pellet in, um.
That's, that's what we're going to have to do, but the thing is, even if we declare the nuisance, and you can do that, it still doesn't go away, and I don't know what the solution is, we've got more than one of these, um, um.
They can get filled in.
Huh?
They can get filled in.
Well, the problem, like I said, I don't know how you actually get to this, Jay, seriously, you'd probably have to come in with a helicopter, drop dirty. You'd probably have to come in with a helicopter, drop it in. You can't, it's, it's the way it's made and where it's located, you can't just drive up to it. You know, people build a pool, they put them in some odd areas in behind their house.
Mm-hmm. It would be very difficult to get in.
Right.
You'd have to wheelbarrow, or come in with a helicopter, like you said, to get to it.
I mean, as a joke, I mean, really, it's, I don't know how you get into it to fill it up.
And the only, with, like I said.
There's two of them in that real similar, close in that area, in the same situation. You're gonna wear that one. But, uh, anyway, that, you answered the question. We'll, we'll look at at least getting that done. I don't know how to address the other part.
Well, anytime you have a problem like that, y'all can call us and we'll see what we can do to address it.
All right. Renee, you know, we, that's the one thing, I guess we're gonna really have to head that direction as far as this is a nuisance to, to at least try to help the situation for the stagnant water. Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, I will see y'all next time. Appreciate it.
Mr. Lane.
Thank you, gentlemen. The item under my section for the work session is the approval of an engagement agreement that involves Integra Realty Resources, which is an appraisal group. Mr. John Prater is the appraiser. This relates to our tax appeal from Siemens Energy Corporation. Mr. Prater is being engaged by and through our attorneys who have been assigned to the defense of that matter, Taggart Rhimes. And so you have in your packet under 6A, you have the proposed engagement agreement that's there for Mr. Prater. And so we just need authorization of the board president to execute that engagement agreement.
So, man.
Motion by Mr. Morris, second by Mr. Morrison, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. Thank you, Craig, Ms. Oster.
Just because you've got the agendas for Tuesday's meeting.
Good to go.
Well, I guess everybody's good to go, so. I hadn't looked at it, but we'll deal with it then. Mike Harrison.
I need to get Engineering Service to do an estimate cost on a storm drain pipe at Avalon Way that AT&amp;T and Comcast cut into. And looks like right now, me and Craig's talks, they may absorb some of the cost of this repair.
Yes, so we had an opportunity, Mike, and Mr. Buster and I had an opportunity to actually go out and look at this situation. There is absolutely no question whatsoever that this particular drain pipe was sliced by the activity of utility service providers. The utilities that are present in the hole appear to be AT&amp;T and/or Comcast, one of the others. So Mike got in touch with, contacted AT&amp;T, they came out and looked at it, acknowledged, yep, that's gonna be one of our problems. Follow-up conversations were with Comcast and AT&amp;T. They talked to each other. Comcast sent someone out, looked at it, acknowledged that appears to be our lines down in the bottom. So we're assuming at this point that there is going to be an arrangement. The information that we're getting from both of those providers, they have asked for the county to put together a cost analysis so that they can then determine how they're gonna cover that. So we've at least gotten that far. So this is kind of the first step in us being able to analyze what our costs are gonna be to try to remediate the, the gash that was caused by them. We have every intent that they will be paying for that.
The problem, I mean, the, the issue that's occurred, is it gonna be an issue, the longer we wait, is it gonna cause more damage?
Yeah. What, what's been happening is that in our right of way, there, a sinkhole has formed right next to the, it's inside of our right of way. So they went out and cleared just enough of the sinkhole to try to figure out what's causing this. And that's when the discovery of this slice, and this, this is a big pipe.
It's about a forty.
Thirty-six inch, forty-two inch pipe. And the slice is over halfway through the pipe. There's no way that the utility installer didn't know that they were on that pipe.
Well, what I'm getting at, would we not do better to go ahead and repair it and send them the bill, tell them how much they owe us?
Yes, sir. I think the intent, though, is we need to figure out what's exactly, what exactly is the solution that we need to provide. We either gonna have to dig it up and replace the pipe completely, or we might be able to slip line it. There's, there are a number of options for us. So that's what Mr. Buster needs to look at, what's the best way to solve the problem?
But then after he does that, we're gonna solve it and?
We're gonna give them a cost estimate and say, we'd like a check.
All right.
On, on this. We think this is what it's gonna cost.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Yep.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison to approve any discussion. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Additional business? We have one item, I know.
And I have an item to add, please.
Well, it's probably the same one. Which one is yours?
This is on the contract for services with diversified companies. It's what Judy currently uses for tag renewals and also in the solid waste department for the billing of our charges, monthly charges to people. Is that what you had?
Nope.
Am I to put that on the agenda?
Let, let me, okay, we'll add it and then I'll explain what it is.
All right, we have a motion to add these two items by Mr. Morris.
There's the second item.
One was the.
Hers, but what's yours?
I don't know if mine's a executive session and it's legal representation.
You made what's yours.
I got an item.
Oh, it's on my agenda? Oh, okay, never mind. Well, doesn't it?
If you read that, you'd remember.
I told you I didn't read it.
Who's the second on adding this?
Uh, Jared, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right.
Judy currently already, the contract is in place. The problem with it was the method that we pay by, I send the postage up, but the portion of it for the tag renewals, we do through a purchase order because it, it is a commodity and a service that they provide. And Judy was of the opinion that we could pay for this service each month without the purchase order. So she gave us the contract again, and we got an AG's opinion that Craig just read, and I'm gonna let him tell you basically what it says.
All right, here's the problem. The state law does not allow the prepayment for services and commodities, prepayment in advance. And so in order for the audit department to allow for a situation where we in advance pay for a service and commodity, you guys have to declare that it is not a prepayment, that it is instead a contract for future services. And that we have a good feeling that this particular vendor will be able to follow through on the commitment to provide those services in the future.
Now, what is, what are these people doing?
They do the tag renewals, they do the cards, the tag renewals for Judy. So, and, and Judy, the way that she presented it, and it's a savings to us because of the time and effort that her department has to do, plus the bulk of it, they get a better rate on the postage and it's a saving to us.
They price to us a flat fee amount per renewal.
Right.
So postage, handling and all of that is inside of that flat fee amount. There's no breakout for what part of that is postage that we can pay for, by the way.
Okay.
Versus what part of that is services. It's all wadded up together. So what we need you guys to do is to make a finding on the record that this is a contract for future services and that we believe the vendor will in fact have the means to satisfy that contract. All right?
Make that as a motion.
Motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Oppose? Ayes have it.
I couldn't have worded it better myself.
Next?
I would like to.
I thought it was solid waste.
Oh, y'all up to it?
No, we did, we could do, we did that all.
Oh, that was just one deal? Okay, all right.
You were the one adding the second.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and this is just something for us to think about. I was up here earlier this week and they, they were having the tax sale. And the tax sale is growing so much, people were in the hall outside and people were sitting in the foyer in here, and this was full. I don't know how much trouble it would cause Ms. Fortenberry to not have it in this room, but to have it in a bigger, I mean, it's outgrown this and it's got, it's disrupting other offices in this building. And it's a several day deal, it's not one day. They have to take all this stuff out, rearrange this office, this room for it, and it, and it don't fit anymore.
What about FEMA building?
Well, that was what I was thinking, but it is a distance for the tax collector's office. I don't know how much IT would have to be involved to do that.
As you say, you know they have to be on our network wherever they're at.
They got FEMA room right now, we think that at some point it would make sense to go ahead and log that in with the county stuff anyway, since it's county property down there.
We've got a year to, we can't change it now, but if we.
Something to kind of pursue and see if it's feasible, nothing else. That rusty look at it and see if it's something they can, they can wire for.
Nothing else, the 911 building, we already, I know it's, it's wired, it's networking already.
I do, I agree with Steve, I do think it's time to look at an alternative if it's, you know, makes sense to do that. Cause it's gonna get bigger each year.
Yeah, it's not right that they all gotta sit out in the hall.
Okay. Yeah. We, we have a one executive session item, personnel matter. Do you have anything? Okay.
All right.
Need a motion to discuss the need going to executive session?
I make the motion.
Well, a motion by Mr. Morrison to discuss the need going second by Mr. Morrow for personnel and possible litigation, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Hey, guys, were we supposed to talk about our radios?
No, they're coming on the fifteen.
Were y'all, were y'all here for a reason?
Yeah.
Back to you.
Okay.
Wait, did we miss them? Did we miss them?
The fifteen, they're coming to fifteen.
Sorry, Ryan. How you doing?
You didn't have to come up here, I was just speaking to you.
No whispering.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, and I told Carl or he's come up with the fifteen. Raymond did, did, did.
That's good.
It ain't, it's good in there.
Got it.
The rock, the raccoon, the possum, or the scum.
Fencing in the, fencing in the truck, there's something living in it, you know? Oh, yeah, it was hilarious, dude. I'm like, you gotta quit doing that crap.
I mean, I didn't think of it until he said something. I'm like, is there like a possum or something inside? You got a fence in there?
Yeah, man, he was killing me.
I was telling you, you're, you're fancy, the possum or the raccoon or whatever's inside the truck.
Yeah. Dude, I was losing it when Steve said that. I couldn't do it.
I was thinking about that joke. Puppy living on your seat.
Why not just get rid of it?
Clean it out one time. Are we ready to go?
Yes, here we are.
All right, folks. Let's go. Come on, people out. Where the hell's Raymond going? Where are you going?
I can stay.
You need to stay.
But if y'all got problems.
Well, there's probably a bunch of guns over there, you just don't know that.
You're probably right. See, when you whisper in my ear, it really makes sense because if you're a names, you will have to work it out.
What was I saying? That, you know, it just came up a while ago, the pole barn that we were just talking about. She said that, yeah, we went, I inspected it, but they didn't know what to inspect. But we didn't even discuss any kind of penalty or anything on that deal on yours.
There's an automatic, if they fail to disclose, there's an automatic.
Anyway. I'm aware. No, I just asked him during the process, that one that came up earlier, and about the, the shack, the pole barn is turning into a house, that our permit guys didn't know, to know, look for a house. But we didn't do any discussion of, hey, they're building a house without a permit and we're not, you know.
And I, and I don't think it started out as that. I think originally it started, it started out as the pole barn.
I make a motion to go into executive session for purpose of litigation and, uh, personnel.
We were trying to have a discussion. Okay, his, his, his motion died like second, so we're gonna finish talking about this. All I was saying was that normally we have some type of penalty to go along with it and that hadn't even been talked about, you know?
He doubled the fee.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
We do.
That's if you didn't get a permit, I mean, that's normally if you don't get a permit.
If you don't do anything, but they had stuff to start with.
They've been inspected.
They got a permit for a pole barn and then they built a house.
Well, no, that's what they, that's what they started building with the pole barn deal. And then got that done and said, we can just close this in for a rest.
I think it's as much on our shoulders as it is theirs.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
But I'm saying, we went out and inspected it three times and we never saw.
That's why I'm asking, I'm saying, hey, how do we not?
Cause it started out as what it was.
Yeah, okay. All right, Bob has a motion to go into executive session.
Chill, man. Your blood pressure's rising, you kinda got a glow about you.
Bob, Bob has a motion for us to go into executive session. Second by Mr. Morrison, all in favor, say aye?
Feel better?
I want to make a quick motion.
I got one just like it.
And he was five foot at least.
Same thing. I had the same, fourteen riders and a button.
TV, you know, Texas.
Oh, he was, I mean, he was bigger than my bicep in his middle.
This dude's fine. Looked like.
Shoddy.
All right, we're all, okay. I got a motion by Mr. Morrow to go into executive session.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross, all in favor, say aye? Ayes have it. All right, um, we have, let the record be, we took no action during executive session.
I'd like to make a motion, we appoint Mr. Mike Harrison as full-time road manager for Rankin County.